Ready?
Okay, it's April 15th. Let's open our commissioners' meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Welcome our visitors. And Jason, we're gonna hold you off just a second. We have a couple bid openings for the jail repair project. Since we have people in the audience that may want to leave, we're gonna do that first for their benefit. Jim?
Okay, well, we decided we'd request a proposal from professional engineering firms, architects and the like, to take a look at and give us our idea of what's involved in making the jail repairs, because we're a little up in the air as to where we are with all of that, and asking for kind of their proposals, what's going on. We're going to take a look at these with John Greer and whoever else, and maybe make a decision, but we'll open them today and read what we can about some of their ideas and then kind of go from there. We had two responses. I understand from John Greer, there was more interest than people looked at it than that, but we only got two responses. One is from JPR, Jones, Petry, and Ruffinsky in South Bend, Elkhart, and then also DLZ in South Bend or Mission Park. So I've got the JPR one first, and they have a proposal for professional consulting services for the jail repair. They've got four hard copies of their consulting agreements and then one digital copy, so I guess that's helpful for us to take a look at them. I'm not gonna read, obviously, the entire booklet. I'm assuming and would gather that'll include kind of their references and who might be involved in doing some of these things, and probably also a idea of what kind of fees and so forth would be involved. I think, another particular one, and kind of scanning through it, it looks like the scheduled estimated base fees totaled $69,525, just for your information. But we'll get those shared to all of you and to John, and we'll go from there. I don't know whether there's some additional information I ought to take a look at or not, so. Which need be we'll probably hear from. And then on the DLZ, again, we got booklet's description of the project and kind of what they foresee as probably what's gonna be involved. They have a fee structure. It looks like theirs is, for the assessment, repair, and restoration, there's a fee of $14,522.50, and then there's some other fee bases for, I think, some of the other additional things that might be involved. So we're not, we have, uh, $14,500, it says, on this compensation summary. So we'll have to take a look at that, see what these guys had in mind, and then kind of go from there.
Is there a copy, say, for each of us?
There's copies for each of you and for John, and we'll get those distributed, and we may have to be in touch with them if we have questions and clarifications, and we'll decide at a later date.
It could be appropriate for you to review and maybe give us an update next meeting? Give us a chance to review, is that enough time?
I would just assume we-
Take them under advisement.
Take it under advisement.
Say, "Take them under advisement" today, but-
I distribute it to you guys, and we take a look at and decide how we want to go from there.
And give them to John.
Give one to John.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Second. Motion made, second, to take the under review, the RFPs from JPR and DLZ, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, sir, do you have a question?
You say the first company was JPR, Jones?
Jones, Petry, Ruffinsky, yes.
Oh, okay. And the DLZ?
And DLZ, correct. Thank you. Anything else? That's all we got, Jim?
That's the only two I had, yeah.
Okay. That's case, we'll move on to our normal agenda. Jason, Highway Department?
Morning.
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 Few comments.
First of all, we have a normal road cut and boars. There we go. First is from CCI Systems versus Comcast. First one is North Union Road, first to West 1C, 1022 North Union Road, Pope Township. The second is Lincoln Way, Pioneer to Oak, 14556 Lincoln Way, Center Township. Number three is Lincoln Way, Pioneer to Oak, 2391 Lincoln Way, Center Township. Number four is County Line to South Lake to Oak Hill, 7315 County Line in Pope Township. Number five is West 3B Road to Sycamore to North Tamarack, 17985 West 3B Road, Pope Township. Number six is first to Sycamore to Redwood, 18318 First Road, Pope Township. Number seven is US 6 to Thorne to West 2A, 19404 US 6 at the intersection, Pope Township. And number eight is Rose to Main to Fourth, 4250 E Road, Pope Township. Is that all there on them, Tori?
Yes.
What's, uh-
What's E Road?
That and what's Oak Hill up over in Pope Township. The only Oak Hill I knew of was the one here on the south side of Plymouth.
Which one was it?
Number four, South Lake to Oak Hill.
South Lake over there, had a little bird off of County Line over there at Coons Lake.
Okay.
There's three or four streets that go in there, one to South Lake.
Okay.
I think the other one actually is Oak Hill.
Okay.
Where's this E Road, is that in time? Well, that number eight. Huh?
What's your original, sir? I don't understand it.
I've never heard of that one. It wouldn't be E. It should be 42, 4250 Rose Road. There you go. Okay, that's my question. We have a correction error, that's 4250 Rose Road for number eight for the correct address. Motion approved.
I approve all the road cuts for Comcast.
I'll wait. Okay. Second. Motion made, second, to approve the eight road cuts for Comcast, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And next, we have some more. These are to install, this Comcast installed two-inch HDPA conduit with inner duct and installed cable within. First project is North Sycamore, West First Road to Two, West 2B Road, 1660 North Sycamore Road, Pope Township. The second one is West First Road to North Sycamore to Redwood Road, 17566 West First Road, Pope Township. Number three is West First Road to West County Line to North Sycamore, 19169 West First Road, Pope Township. Number four is North Queen to West First Road to US 6, 1098 North Queen Road, Pope Township. I make the motion to approve. Second. Motion made, second, to approve the next four requests for Comcast, all for, excuse me, all for, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Then we have NIPSCO, install new gas line service, 20A Road and Sage to South Shore to 20B, 374-inch MDP along 20A Road and Sage to serve new customer, two systems to be tied together.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, second, to approve the gas line installation for NIPSCO, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, I got a contract from the state. This was for an unofficial detour route, and the amount is $7,603.45.
Yes, so I just need that. Don't take that with anything.
So we ended up collecting for the unofficial detour route for damages done, so I need that signed and send it back to the state for review.
That was the damages last summer, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're most likely gonna see the exact same thing up on US 6 on that section of Rose Road and 2B Road, same type of scenario.
But it was just one signature?
That's everybody.
Nope. No hammer here. Looks like there's all three. There's several spots.
Yeah.
There's three spots. Can we all sign it?
I think Angie has to sign.
Pardon?
I think Angie even signs that one, too.
I think there's a spot for everybody there.
There's a spot for everybody there.
I don't think we're unhappy.
I won't.
So do we need a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the unofficial detour reimbursement contract between Marshall County and Indax for the amount of $7,603.45.
Motion to, second, sorry.
Motion made, second, to approve the reimbursement for damages on 331, the unofficial detour, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Bridge 1 for Yule Trail, the letting is still for November 18th. There's no updates on that. Bridge 232, all right-of-way acquisitions have been completed, finishing, reviewing, and signed utility work plan. Bridge 231, there was no update from last meeting. Bridge 88, the stage one plan's been completed and starting on the environmental. Mill Pond Dam for the improvements, contractor has been contacted to give us an estimate for the Geotech study. Hope to have that work completed within the next 30 days. Once completed, we'll review with DLZ and plan for additional work. Nothing on 7th Road mitigation. Roadwork getting ready for the 2024 road program, will be patching and prepping roads that are to be chipped and sealed, will be grading gravels and prepping for dust control, starting the reclaiming this week, and we're running cold patch today. No fair, Bridge 108 East 7th Road, the RFPs have been posted for those. The block grant for the EECBG, the additional information that was discussed last week, that was changing the locations of the electric to pull from a RMC, which I'll be upgrading the service on that. Part of that was the additional of the transformer and putting electric supply enough to the KWs. So what they're basically saying was, is the KWs where we originally was gonna pull from, at peak performance, it may go over that 50 kilowatt per. If it goes over that, then there's a different charging for that. So with the upgrade that they're doing, where we're gonna pull that from, we wouldn't jeopardize having that over that 50 KW. So in reviewing that with the block grant writers, which is the feds, they said that that's perfectly fine, we just need to tidy up some of that additional verbiage in that and submit that back to them for it. So I will be following up with MACOG on that as well. With the upgrades, they're moving all three poles, which would be over by the AMA building, they're moving them out of that grassy area over closer to the fence. The two poles most likely would be something that we would end up paying anyway. I think they said that would be roughly about $10,000 total. Community crossings, Marshall County was awarded the 1.5 million. That will be advertised on the 22nd, and then we'll plan to open those in the May 6 Commissioners' Bridge maintenance, would like to advertise for bids, that's back when we did the shimmying, tightening, cleaning bridge decks and all that, two years ago, I think it was, maybe three. Keeping up on that, so I guess I'm asking if it's okay to go ahead and put those out for bid.
You need a motion for that?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we update, put out for bid, the shimming and tightening timber bridges.
Second. Motion made, second, to allow Jason to go ahead and advertise for bids, the, some maintenance on the timber bridges, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I actually think, I forgot to mention it last week, but it was on there, we did go to four tens last week, or started four tens. That's all I got.
Jason, I got one thing here under Commissioner, I told him we take care of while you're here, it says highway funding. Angie, is that basically the money we're gonna approve, or do we have to transfer something? Because I know he's got the money for-
He, yes.
For the match.
For the match.
Has the match money already between, and Jason, we gave you a copy of it as well, and it's on the screen, between the, what's left in the community crossings grant, what you've already have budgeted, and the low it, the 15,000 that's still sitting in the low it, you have your match money for that. It was 25 percent, so you needed 375,000.
Total, we needed 500.
Total match, you needed 375,000. 25 percent of 1.5 is 375,000. I think your projects you had were exceeded.
375. Why don't that sound right?
Yeah, I think you had like 2.1 million in projects, but you were only awarded the 1.5, so what we required was the 375.
Okay. So total was 375.
And we have a copy of that, we will give to you.
Okay.
What did you get the 500 at, Jason? Is that with the additional projects, or what?
Well, they raised that, I mean, the original was 1 million.
Yeah.
So the, the match money on the 1 million was 333,334.
I thought it was 25 percent.
That is 25 percent.
Hmm?
That is the 25 percent. So I don't understand where 375.
We just did a calculation this morning, and it was 375,000.
Okay.
Because you haven't, you have money left in your grant match from last year. That's where the 90,000's coming from.
Okay. That was the last year's?
Yes. But I know you had additional paving projects on there which exceeded the, what the grant would be, which might be where some of the confusion's at.
Do you want to, you got anything else for Jason?
No, I don't.
No. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next is Marshall County Hope, Thomas Kennard.
I am not Thomas Kennard. I am Annette Haney, and I am the Tobacco Education Coordinator, but I'm also on the Steering Committee for Marshall County Hope.
And I'm Sandy Dunphy from the Marshall County Health Department, and I also serve on the Marshall County Hope Consortium.
Thomas did send me the, early this morning, he apologizes for not being here in person. He is on his way back from Georgia, and the bus broke down. So he could not make it to this meeting this morning, unfortunately. So he wrote a little summary of the things that the consortium and we are working on currently. We're re-energizing and reconvening the consortium as the Marshall County Hope Consortium before it was Project Hope, and we had a $3 million grant, and that ended in December. So now we are regenerizing it, we're getting together, we're getting, starting to meet the first Wednesday of every month from 9:00 to 10:00, and the locations are gonna be varied throughout the county. We're expanding and strengthening the consortium to the spirit of total health, just not the opiate addiction, but the total health of a person, because there's a lot going on with that person besides just drug abuse. A lot of them are dual diagnosis, which means they either have a depression, anxiety, some other issues going on, abuse as a child, an ACE's child.
Now, like, the long-term plan for Marshall County Hope is to make it like the hub for all services, all wraparound services in the county, whether you're experiencing homelessness or food insecurity, and we want it to be that wraparound service, not just the focus of substance use, but a lot of times, that's the reason the person is homeless or can't have access to food, is because they need help for the addiction. So, that's the long-term call.
Yeah. We're gonna partner with Purdue Extension. They have a program this year called Taking Action to Address Substance Use in Communities, which we abbreviate TASC, to create a system map of the individuals who are on that journey of substance use abuse, so we can see the progress and what is going on.
And other counties in the state have had success working with this Purdue program, so we're trying to follow the example that they have set and not make maybe some of the same mistakes, you know, not reinvent the wheel, as I'm always told is, you know, a great thing. And of course, it's free through Purdue, so free is almost always a good thing.
It's a wonderful thing. So securing funds to maintain Marshall County Project Hope, because we have peer recovery coaches out there right now. Currently, we have two, and they have reached over 273 people in Marshall County as recoveries. So, and we also, transportation for vouchers with the Council on Aging, to get back and forth to their meetings, to get back and forth to court, to appointments that they need to go to. We're also gonna be applying for a 501(c)(3), the nonprofit status. We are working on that, we do not have that yet, but that is in the works. We're also applying to be a recovery community organization in partnership with the Indiana Recovery Network. We want to be a recovery hub, as Sandy was saying here in Marshall County, to work with the individuals on all recovery services. We're gonna, we applied for a grant through the Indiana Care's Echo Grant Funding, which we were able to receive. It was $95,000, and across that, it's gonna be a two-and-a-half-year grant period. The funding covers the salary for one PRC, partial salaries for others, and the Marshall County Hope Coordinator, who is Thomas Kennard. Funding for several provinces of this are also going to the Suicide Overdose Fatality Trainings and Review Team here in Marshall County. And that is the abbreviation SOFR. I hope you're all aware of what that group is doing here in Marshall County at this point in time.
So the Suicide Overdose Fatality Review Team in each county is a requirement for the Health First Indiana funding through the grant we received for health departments. So to be able to provide more funding for that service through this grant, I was, I saw this Echo Grant pop up on, you know, one of the sites that came into my inbox, and I thought, this is what we need so we can keep that program going. The other fatality review team we need to work on is infant mortality, and that's another one of our requirements that we're going to do. So that's why I'm really excited about the work Marshall County Hope is doing, because it's meeting some of those key requirements that we need to do as a county, anyway.
We're also looking at to expand the youth and adult mental health first aid trainings here in Marshall County. Okay, so here's his last quote. "Speaking of which, on behalf of the consortium, I want to express deep gratitude to the commissioners for entrusting us with the opiate settlement dollars that have been released thus far. Having funding at our disposal will continue to help us expand our decisions of how we can improve systems of care here in Marshall County. The need is great, and I hope, I think you all understand, the need is very great here in Marshall County. For example, our PRC's peer recovery coaches, Jessica Joseph and Sky Bickers, both have full caseloads at this time. We need to look at hiring another peer recovery coach. We need a third person on that support team. Additionally, as the SOFR team develops, community-level recommendations based on case reviews of those individuals who have either committed suicide or overdosed, we are looking at recommendations for who have died, and these are the themes that are developing that we need funding in order to implement real and lasting changes here in Marshall County. Along these lines, the Marshall County Hope Consortium would like to request that you entrust the restricted settlement dollars of $155,618.25 back to the Marshall County Hope to continue working as this is working."
Actually, it's 115.
Oh, sorry, 115.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. You told me 115. 115. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you so much for your time. Please feel free to reach out to me if you'd like more information or any questions. Would like to come to the consortium meeting or would like to be involved in any way. Thomas Kennard, Hope Director, Annette Haney, and Sandy Dunphy. Questions?
The, I have one, if I could.
Sure.
When we used the restricted funds before, you know, they were pretty well always substance abuse-
Right.
-related programs. The expanded services, although they include a bunch of that information, still, it sounded like they might be outside of that to some degree.
Right, which is why we're seeking the 501(c)(3), then like the grant we received for the Echos can pay for some of these hub things we would like to do.
But are, are we still going to be able to qualify under the restricted-
Yes.
Use, you got that okay through FSSA, or how did you, how did you get that? How do you, why are you saying yes to that?
We are following the guidelines of what the law is stating and what the ordinance states about that, because we are working still with the substance abuse users and the opiates that we do have here in Marshall County. So we have the peer recovery coaches to help, we have group counseling that's gonna help, we have transportation issues, that's a big part of that.
But is there some auditing, then, that, or accounting that we have to do to make sure that the restricted funds are used for the permitted uses?
We can do that, that would not be a problem or an issue, because we can transfer that 95,000 or 98,000 that we received from the Echos and separate those two entities.
I just don't want us to-
No, exactly.
-use the funds and then find out we didn't use it the right way, and then we gotta figure out-
Yeah, right now, the Echo funding that we received is just kind of sitting there till we figure out how the whole hub program is gonna work. So it's not doing anything yet, we're just using the funding here for substance use treatment right now.
Do you want to add any other questions?
Thank you for that update.
And our request?
Oh, I don't, I, personally, I think I don't, you kind of, we weren't, I shouldn't say we weren't expecting it, but I'd like to think about it before we do it, because we do have other programs that would qualify in the county, so I'll make sure we use it the right way.
Really? May I ask who?
You know, I don't know all the rules on it yet, so I just want to make sure we're covered. That's just me, unless you guys want to do something. You want to address the request today?
Because we gave you money last year on the restricted funds.
Correct. Because we were the only program-
Right.
-in Marshall County that was meeting all those standards and all those requirements that had to be done. And we still are.
What about a facility like David's Courage? Do they fall under that also, or no? Or do you work with David's Courage?
We do work with David's Courage. We do serve transportation issues. We do serve transportation issues. The thing with David's Courage is that it receives insurance payments.
Okay.
We do not.
You do that.
We do not.
And our peer recovery coaches will work with anyone that has went through any program. And I, I believe their peer recovery coaches, you have to be, you know, inpatient, you know, in their residential program to work with their peer recovery coaches, because we have people that, you know, maybe are seeing a, their family doctor for medication-assisted therapy, but they still need that peer recovery coach, and then our two gals are working with them and those families.
So our peer recovery coaches served all Marshall County patients?
I'll make a motion that we award Marshall County Hope the amount of $115,618.25 to the Marshall County Hope program.
I second that motion.
Motion made. Second, award $115,618.25 to Marshall County Hope, Jim? Are we okay here doing this?
It sounds like they've done that. You know, you probably aren't going to get as much money, I mean, our, our revenue coming in is going to drop way off, so.
Which is why we are certainly looking for...
Hope you don't expect us every year.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it's not sustainable.
No, and we understand, that's why we're looking at other grants and other things to continue to work on it.
Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
There you go.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Is Marshall County involved in any of the opioid settlement with pharmacies, like?
Yes.
Oh, good.
That's where some of that money is, I think. We got some of the pharmacy money in already.
We have, we have received some, we're just not receiving as much as what the state website says we're supposed to be receiving.
But it was, because that's a separate suit with the pharmacies.
No, it's part, well, it's still part of the opioid settlement, and they, in fact, I think under the pharmacies, well, it's at least to have the same restrictive policies and unrestricted policies, so.
Okay. So do you have been on the different account?
We do not receive a breakdown of where the money's coming from, so we're just getting a lump sum, and we're being told if it's restricted or unrestricted.
Yeah, I had, I had just been at a state meeting where they talked about it was two separate, and you had to opt in to both settlements, and I just didn't know, I could never find a list of what counties had opted in for the pharmacy. Okay.
And, and we are to receive pharmacy settlement.
Okay.
So, they're, except for a couple of companies that are in bankruptcy, pretty well, receives global settlements from all of the defendants, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much, and we will continue working and continue to work on this tragedy that we have here, so, thanks.
Is that all your update you have, because you were on the agenda twice?
I'm on the agenda again, you lucky people here.
Okay.
And Jalisa Gibson, the Youth Director with me, is going to be joining us, because she has been very and very involved with this, more so than me, I think, but I'm going to let her talk too. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jalisa Gibson, I'm the Youth Coordinator for St. Joseph Health System for Marshall County. And yes, we have been very eventful for the Voice Group, so just a reminder of what Voice is. Voice is the youth empowerment group here in Marshall County, where they educate, engage, and empower their peers to be tobacco and vape-free. Up, you see some pictures of the events that we've had this quarter. In February, Bremen High School and Middle School students held a table during the Bremen versus Town, versus Gym Town Boys Basketball Game, where they also, during halftime, made some announcements with some vape facts and invited other peers to join the Voice Group. And all of our groups here in Marshall County participated in Take Down Tobacco Day. A reminder of all the groups that we have here in the county, Bremen Middle School, Bremen High School, we also include Yuri Middle School in, with us, and then we have Plymouth Boys and Girls Club. Take Down Tobacco Day is a national day of action with tobacco-free kids. It's technically on April 1st, but we celebrated it multiple days through, between March and April. Bremen Middle School students chose to do a campus cleanup, where they went around campus and picked up cigarette butts, and then they made posters with vape facts to show their peers and invite their peers to Voice. Bremen High School students held a table during their lunch, where they passed out vape facts along with some other free gifts from Voice to encourage their peers to be vape-free. Boys and Girls Club made posters that they used to educate their other club peers. And then Yuri Middle School did a, recorded a broadcast that went across the whole school system, where they talked about Voice and they talked about Take Down Tobacco Day along with vape facts. They also were able to meet with Senator Boicek, where they had about half a class period, where they were able to ask him questions and talk to him about stuff, where we also included Voice's state, what's it, theme, I guess, that they've got going on right now, which is rise above the clouds and be the one to be a part of the change, so. A lot going on. Now students are getting prepared for World No Tobacco Day next month, where they're going to be doing probably very similar types of activities, where they get to choose how they want to celebrate World No Tobacco Day.
We are reaching into the fourth graders. We have completed the Waukerden Elementary School, where the kids were so excited to be in that group. We do have over 90 pictures of t-shirts that we need to choose one that is going to be the t-shirt that all the kids receive, with Breathe Easy logo, the Help First logo, and the Waukerden Elementary School logo. So that was fun and exciting. We are working with Menominee also, right now, and our next event there will be talking the last second half of the environment and what cigarettes and vapes do to the environment, and they will do their t-shirt design at that time. So, and we've gotten into all the Plymouth Elementary Schools, which will be done by the end of the year. It's a busy task and a hard task to do all this, so we're going to do Waukerden and Plymouth now. The beginning of the school year, we will be touching Triton, Culver, and Argus to get their and Lavelle involved. But we can't do it all this, this year, it's just too much. So those schools will be done by the end of the year, and then we will be going on. The counselors and teachers so far have really praised the program, they're really enjoying it. The counselor was super, super excited that we came in and did this, and it was on the fourth grade level, so the kids understood. So that's where we are also with that, and that's, I've enjoyed it. I, I like going in with the kids. But any questions? Because we want to give you an update on Jalisa being here, and I want to thank you again for bringing her on board, because I can't do everything. I try, but I can't do it, so.
I do want to add that the Marshall County Health Department, we just put out a vaping, like, public service announcement, it'll be a commercial, it'll be running on some local TV channels and on the radio, just about the dangers of vaping, and then with a link to resources to help people quit vaping, because we know in our youth, that's probably a bigger issue than the smoking itself is the vaping. So we're trying to address that.
Yeah. And the cargo trailer?
Oh, yeah, we got that wrapped. Wrapped, yeah, sorry, I never know the word. I was saying labeled, but wrapped, and it's all cleared out, and we're getting ready to start outfitting it on the inside, so we can get it all set up to take it around this summer for education as well.
Good.
Any questions?
Any questions, Mike?
I don't.
Any comments?
Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you for what you are doing for the youth of Marshall County.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Building and grounds, Billy. And Billy, before you get started, can I, I just want to take time, I think we all want to thank Doug Masterson for the job he did for years of service to this county, and I see him sitting back there, and we appreciate everything he done for us, and he did a great job, so.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget that.
Yep, for sure. Some updates on projects that have been completed or are going to be completed. Superior Court III Jury Room removed the panels on the wall, updated with drywall. Drop ceiling is going to be replaced, it was, it was bad, so we went ahead and just replaced that. Replacing the heat pump in there, so they have AC and heat, the other one just gave out, quit. So since the ceiling's out, we went ahead and just replaced it. Replaced both toilets in the bathrooms in their form, since that side wasn't used for a long time, and now it is, kind of updating that a little bit. South parking lot, the gravel parking lot of, all across from Jefferson, we put the fence up there and labeled County Parking Only signs up there. The morgue, he needed a procedure light above the autopsy table, whatever, so we, we had that done. At our maintenance building on Plum, I'm waiting on a quote to come back, but we're going to put a fence around the perimeter of the, the north side of the building there, so we can keep our implements and all that stuff secure that we don't, that we use for the winter time. The concrete sidewalks leading up to the, the new staircase, Dean R. Mason will be here either late spring, he's saying, or early summer to replace those legs leading up to the side, up to the staircase. So those should be done here fairly soon. And, oh, the courthouse also has a new water softener in it to, now the whole building's soft, helps with our urinals and our toilets, sinks. And I have a few companies that are going to give you some bids on the extension carpet, because the contract that we were using has retired. So, I'm just waiting on the, the bids to come back.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
Good job, Billy.
I think we're going to have to pave that.
Parking lot?
Parking lot over there, because we're on this compliance with the city's zoning, so.
Yeah.
May want to talk to Jason and see if he could pave that sometime.
Okay.
But, yeah, I've heard that a couple of times.
Yeah, heard recently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Yep.
Call for Youth Club, Brian Carver.
Good morning. Good morning.
Please state your name and title for the record.
My name is Brian Carver, I'm the Executive Director of the Culver Youth Club, and I'm here to give you guys an update upon what we've been doing and some of the program we've been able to offer. CYC again has increased its enrollment from last year. Last year, we had 90 kids registered for club. This year, we sit at 117, with a daily average attendance of 80 kids. And we've continued to grow our program and what we're able to offer the students that we serve. Aside from daily rotations, every kid gets a chance to go to art, gym, and the games and technology room. We've also been able to implement through grants and outside funding, we have a gardening club, we've been able to partner with the Lake Maxon Cucky Environmental Foundation, build some garden boxes, that was highly successful. We have our kids' triathlon club, we've branched out into intramural flag football, we're working on basketball, we've actually come up and played the Bremen Boys and Girls Club a few times. In addition to, we partnered with the library for a junior book club, we've been offering a cooking club, as well as fishing, which is always a hit, especially around this time of the year. In addition, our programming works in concert with the school to offer educational support, homework rooms, and as far as remediation and testing and things in that, in that area. We are also in the process of planning our eight-week summer program. This has continued to grow as well. Our first year, two summers ago, we had 45 kids registered. Last year, we almost doubled that, we had 75, and we already sit at 65 kids registered for this year's summer program. Again, everything is centered around providing high-quality, cost-effective childcare to the, the families that we serve. Our summer program, like I said, is eight weeks, and we're able to offer that for $400, so $50 a week, which is really good over the course of the summer. It runs from 7:30 to 5:30, and our goal is to keep them active and engaged on a daily basis. Our school time program for the entire school year, it's $200, so it equates to about a dollar a day for snack, homework help, the programming's field trips. We also are offering a variety of field trips this summer, to canoeing down the tip of Canoe River, we're going to Edge Adventures up at Run Village, you know, and there's a variety of things around Culver and in Marshall County that we take the students to do as well, Potato Creek, things of that nature. Again, our mission is to able, is to be able to offer, you know, a high-quality programming to every family that we serve. Our school time program is specifically for kids at Culver Elementary School, but our summer program has really branched out, and we've seen students from Plymouth come, we've had students from Oregon Davis, outside entities come in as well. So it's, it's really been successful, and we've been able to continue to grow that year over year. You know, and again, our ability to operate and keep growing our program and what we offer the kids is formed through partnerships with organizations like you guys and, and, you know, your generosity. In the past, I believe that we've requested $6,000 in funding from the Marshall County Commissioners. If it's within your budget, I would, I would like to do that again today, so we can continue to grow and build and, and make Culver, the Youth Club, as successful as we possibly can. Any questions?
I think that we had $6,000 in the budget this year, did they get it yet?
No, because we have not received a letter requesting that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So if you have a letter with you today.
I do not have it with me, David, I can get it to you.
To us, we can process, process that payment, and if the Commissioners want that paid...
It's in the budget.
It's already budgeted.
Sorry, budgeted.
If you want it before your next meeting, then I would just need a motion to have it as a prepay.
I'll make that motion.
To make it a prepay?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made, and second, to make the payment to the Culver Youth Club a prepay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
But you'll still need that letter, okay?
I will get that to you today.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys.
With the kids. Next, we have an item, the clerk's office, Jenny Bennett, has a request for a microfilm machine, and she texted me earlier this morning, and she has a, a family situation, so she could not make the meeting. She, her old machine, I guess, has basically broke down, she can't get parts for it, when I'm being told. So, the new machine is $10,285. What did they transfer the other night, 10,000?
She, she has enough to cover this cost, and this has only got room for one signature.
Okay, anyhow, she contacted me a couple of weeks ago, and I said, you have to have this approved before I can sign that request.
$10,285.
Yeah, but I mean, she's already has, she, she has money transferred the other night to cover it, so.
Make a motion to approve the request for $10,285, with the President of the Commissioners signing the agreement.
Second.
Motion made second, for the clerk to purchase a microfilm machine from MJ Office Systems for $10,285, with the Commissioner, Board President signing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 4-H Council, Teresa Barnhart, there she is. Congratulations to you guys, a lot of hard work, but looks like it paid off for you.
Thank you. I'm Terry Barnhart, the Vice President of the Marshall County 4-H Council, and behalf, on behalf of our council, I respectfully request the reinstatement of the $10,000 recently returned by Purdue. This funding is crucial to supporting the 4-H youth and the operations at the Marshall County Fairgrounds during the fair. We are thrilled to share that we've recently been awarded the $50,000 Hometown TE Mobile Grant, and this grant is a testament to our commitment to creating an inclusive environment for youth with diverse physical, mental, and emotional abilities. These funds will be used to implement the ADA compliant improvements such as bleachers, adult changing tables, high-low tables for wheelchair accessibility, and Braille signs with images and words to benefit visually impaired individuals and non-readers. We are excited about the possible, the positive changes it will bring and the opportunities it will open up for our 4-H participants. If granted the additional $10,000, we intend to prioritize the accusation of a new PA system. This system is not just a luxury, but a necessity for us to ensure that the safety and the comfort of our attendees. It will incorporate essential features such as closed captioning to the arena, to arena televisions, scrolling boards in each barn for updates on classes and events, and vital, and vital safety management features such as weather alerts, active shooter situations if necessary, and missing persons notifications on the boards. With the PA system in place, we can enhance the overall experience for the attendees and to maintain a secure environment for all. We extend our deepest gratitude to the Commissioners and the County Council for their unwavering support of our efforts to serve the youth of Marshall County.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I've talked to Terry and Patty about this, and they, they want to get that. No, I've talked to Terry and Patty about this, and they, they want to get that sound system completed over there because it's probably been there since day one.
We estimate somewhere in the early nineties, the sound system was put in, and the last couple of days of our fair last year, the sound system blew, and we only had one working component of it. So, it, it's very crucial that we get a different sound system.
Be able to get that for next year?
Yes.
Yep. Good. Do I have a motion?
And that ten thousand is setting where Angie do?
Currently, it's in the general fund. It will be appropriated in the Commissioners' donation line, and we will get the additional appropriation set. The County Council did give their support at their last meeting, so again, if you do this as a prepay in the motion, we can get a check cut sooner rather than later.
I would make a motion to approve the ten thousand dollars as a prepay to the 4-H Council.
Second.
Motion made second to approve as a prepay the ten thousand dollars that was reimbursed to us from Purdue, given to the 4-H Council for their project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks. Thank you.
I have a letter. Yep. Thank you.
She's on top of it.
Oh, as always.
Sheriff.
Morning.
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 Here are a couple of things. Here to request application for the CHIRP grant again. We've had this grant now for probably over twenty years, and it renews on October first of this year. It will go through 2025. This is, used to be called Operation Pullover, Seat Belt Enforcement, Aggressive Driver.
Do you remember what the amount is?
No, this is one depending on how many, how many grants they approve throughout the state, that's how much money you end up getting.
Yeah, they divvy it out.
Yes.
I make a motion that we allow the sheriff to apply for the CHIRP grant for the year 2025.
Second. Motion made second to allow the sheriff to apply for the CHIRP grant for the year 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, would ask for approval to, to the grant agreement with the Indiana Department of Health and the Marshall County Sheriff's Department for the amount of eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. This is a COVID-19 detection and mitigation grant, and that money will be used to replace two washing machines and two dryers in the jail.
I make a motion that we approve the request from the sheriff to apply for the COVID-19 through the Marshall County Health Department in the amount of eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents for two washing machines and two dryers.
Second. Motion made, and seconded, to allow the sheriff to apply for the COVID-19 detection and mitigation.
He's already received it.
Already private, just have to accept the agreement.
Oh, okay.
This is the contract, and it only has a spot for one signature?
Oh. Well, I make a motion to allow the president of the Commissioners to sign the.
The contract.
Contract.
Contract agreement. Second. Motion made second to allow the president of the Board to sign the contract agreement for the sheriff for the COVID-19 detection and mitigation grant agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then I have two out-of-state travel requests for training. The first will be for, for employees to attend the Central Square, which is our, our software that we use for jail records, patrol records, and CAD. It's all one system. That training is in Dallas, Texas on May fifth through May eighth.
Do I have a motion?
Do you have a dollar amount for that?
I don't have the exact. I think the conference fees are about four hundred a person, and then we pay the hotel and travel.
You pay now that commissary, or?
Yeah, that comes out of commissary.
Commissary.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the travel for the four employees going to Dallas for the Central Square training from May fifth to May eighth.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the travel request for four employees to go to Central Square training in Dallas, May fifth to May eighth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then the last out-of-state travel for training will be on Monday, July twenty-second, so one-day training at Addison, Illinois. This is for one employee. This is a, for a nine-one-one operator, and it's, they'll be working on skills of tactical dispatch teams and advanced skills for team members, including the incident command system.
Do I have a motion for that?
Sub move. Second.
Motion made second to allow the sheriff to send one, one person for training to, on seven-twenty-two to Addison, Illinois for, for nine-one-one operator training. Is that correct?
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So, I have, thank you.
We had an incident at my house yesterday. We had to call nine-one-one, and I'd just like to commend whoever it was that answered the nine-one-one call. She was very thorough, asked a lot of questions, and one of the deputies showed up at our house, too, so I'd just like to commend them for the way they handled themselves and for the officer that showed up.
Yeah. Well, thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay.
Can I ask the sheriff real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Who, do you deal with a rep from QCC out there? Somebody bring you the contract, or do you just get it from their offices?
Who do I deal with?
Yeah.
Mainly, I talked to the, the owner.
CFO, Scroggins?
Yes, Lisa.
That's what you, I, I was just wondering if there was somebody else, but, okay, thanks.
Saint Joe County uses Health Net for their.
There's several, there's several companies out there.
Medical services?
Like, Elkhart County uses their own in-house service. But there are several other contracted medical companies that will provide your medical for your jail. But QCC's about the largest. They're probably in seventy percent of the jails.
I don't know if it was just time to shop, or are you happy with them, or?
I.
That's a loaded question.
Yeah. No, I, I've appreciated what they've done for us, and, and I know there's a situation with the contract where they used to cover, but now they don't want to put that in the contract, and I.
They still have the indemnifying provisions, but we have an incident where we think they should be indemnifying us for attorney fees.
Yeah, right.
And they're not, so I was trying to address that. Plus, we have a situation also, we think that they should have higher insurance liability limits, and that's causing problems in getting the matter resolved.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew there was issues there, but as far as care, I mean, we've really, they've really done really well for us.
All right.
All right.
Thanks.
You bet.
Thank you.
Attorney's report.
Okay, I have a brief report. Just County Tourism Board interviews this afternoon, so that's on the agenda. I drafted one last email to Ms. Scroggins at QCC, and I'll let you know if that triggers any kind of response. Took care of the jail repairs. I did contact Rick Hall. He's agreed to assist the county in a road use agreement, decommissioning agreement with Inven Energy, Tamarack Solar. I forward you his proposed engagement once he is on board. Also, I think I sent you the proposed expense reimbursement agreement, which he has entered into previously with that same company for reimbursement of his, of the professional fees. And so, if you're so inclined, we'd look for approval of his engagement letter. So, one positive thing I think for Jason is, is he, Rick worked with White County and the county attorney in White County and the superintendent in White County and the Commissioners in White County to come up with that agreement. So, I know that we worked off of that in the road use agreement instead of the one that they sent us, and so it was a positive kind of thing.
That agreement's very detailed, too.
Pardon me?
That agreement is very detailed.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that, that's what we were working with. So, I thought that was a plus for what we were talking about.
I had one question in the, one agreement that talked about us understanding they have other clients. They have other clients that could be even in the county? How does that work out? I mean, but they still work for us?
His engagement is just going to be for, for the county Commissioners to work out these agreements with Inven Energy, Inven Energy. Yeah, I mean, it, he doesn't want to, you know, get into anything countywide that might get adrift with other clients that they may or may not have. I don't know who he's got or, you know, but there's maybe some.
I just see the language, I wouldn't sure quite what all that.
Yeah, I, I think that's, he just wants to make sure that he's, he's narrowing focus on that representation of the Commissioners and, and that's project.
I make a motion that we enter the letter of engagement with Rick Hall from Barnes and Thornburg for the purpose of the decommissioning agreement and the road usage agreement.
Second.
Just like to say, before we go any farther, I will not be signing the engagement. I'll be beluding no because I am concerned about our bonds we have covering us. I question the fact, and I'm not an attorney, that if I knowingly sign something I believe to be flawed, and which I've said before, I think the process has been flawed, and there's litigation, could it jeopardize my bond that covers me, and I'm not willing to take that risk. So, motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries two to one.
And then the other item on my attorney report, you recall, it came up a couple of meetings ago, that Ty Adley was looking for the Commissioners to adopt a resolution that either permitted Ty to appoint a substitute Plan Com, BZA member from the Plan Commission, or if you guys have somebody in mind, sort of a permanent sort of replacement for the, for the BZA. For instance, if there is a BZA upcoming meeting and the, and the, what would be the Commissioners typically appointment to that BZA if that person can't make it for whatever reason. Always in the past, he went to another Plan Commission member that was appointed by the Commissioners to fill that BZA role, and that's what, he's either proposing to do that, or I think the County Council adopted a, a resolution that appointed a permanent replacement kind of thing, and that's fine, too. It's just that I think he's looking to have some direction in the event, like has a BZA meeting where somebody's not going to be able to make it.
Do you know who our appointment is now, Jim?
No.
Do we have one or two, Angie? Do you know?
Uh, give us a second.
Okay.
I think we appoint Jeff Gustafson.
ER's?
Should be Jeff.
We just, we just have the one?
Do we have two? I don't know.
Sorry, I did not have that.
That's okay. I was just curious.
He would know, and I should probably ask him about it, but.
Sorry, I don't have my most up-to-date list. I think, I know you have at least.
Or Trent Bennett.
I think it might be.
We have one or two.
I think you have two.
I think it's.
But I apologize.
I think it's Jeff and Trent.
Jeff and Trent?
Jeff and Trent.
I think.
So, if one of those two couldn't make it, what he's done in the past is he's just gone to a Plan Commission member that you all appointed and ask if they were available to fill in for the absent BZA member.
So, it'd be one of our appointments from the Plan Commission?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's.
Not the overall Plan Commission?
Yeah, not the overall Plan Commission.
I would make a motion to allow Ty Adley to go to the Plan Commission and ask our appointed person to fill the role of the Commissioners' appointment on the BZA if they are unavailable.
And do you know if we have one or two on that, on that Plan? We have the one receiving our payment. Kevin, you're our appointment Plan Commission, and you can't serve on BZA as, as a Commissioner.
No.
So, that, I'm not sure that works if we only have one.
I, no, I think, but we appoint other, we appoint one from the, from the Board, but don't we also appoint, we appoint other Plan Commission members?
Not sure. I think we do.
I believe there's multiple lists.
Isn't Mark Goodling our appointment?
No, not.
No, he's to the Plymouth.
He's Plymouth.
Oh, he's Plymouth, okay.
Because you have to have, I think on the Plan Commission, you have to have some, you know, balancing of parties, and I think you've got more than one. I think you've got a couple of appointments.
We appoint Michelle Maris to the.
Yes, Michelle Maris is one. Yeah. I don't know which other one I.
Matt, do we appoint Matt Miller?
Matt Miller might be better.
I think Matt's good.
Matt's the other, and Matt's already on it.
And Jay House Dettler, is he an appointment? I don't believe he's an appointment either.
No. I think it's Matt. I think it's Matt, yeah.
Or Michelle Maris.
I guess we could.
I think we need to figure out who we appoint and who we appointed to the BZA before we.
Why don't we just postpone this until next meeting?
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. I think he just would like.
Yeah.
To know so that if he runs into it.
Already tracked my motion.
Okay.
Okay, and there's, what do you, what do you want me to do to follow up? You want me to find out all that information?
Yes, please.
Could you find out who's, who's appointed who?
But I think, I think Kevin tried, I think it was them, too.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Let me get my agenda out here. Thank you very much. County Audit Report.
Hey, I have your April first minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the April first minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have April third executive session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the April third executive session minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then I have your claims.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, we come to the part, we have any public comments from the audience?
I do.
Hey, you're not the public.
I need to leave.
Huh?
I need to go back to our community drawing.
Okay.
I need to make sure that's crystal clear.
Okay.
That one point five million is seventy-five percent match. Our twenty-five percent match is twenty-five, two hundred, or five hundred thousand. That's how that works. So, I just wanted to make sure because that five hundred thousand is our match on the one point five million.
Okay.
So, we're getting the two million?
Two million is what it takes. The one point five million is in dot seventy-five percent match.
Okay.
Oh, so we got actually two million dollar grant, but we gotta.
You can't.
We gotta put five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, okay, that was, I thought we got.
Yeah, so that's.
Okay. That clears that up.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because it caught me off guard, my numbers, and I was thinking Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because it caught me off guard, my numbers, and I was thinking too much, and I'm like, I need to read.
You kept saying five hundred thousand.
Think this through a minute.
But I thought the grant was one point five. That's what confused me.
It is. That's our seventy-five percent match to our twenty-five percent, which is the five hundred thousand.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
So then all the other numbers.
You still have some money that you can use for that, so it'll be a smaller amount that you have to come up with?
So, the original one I sent is pretty close, maybe off a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments they wanna make? Anything on your mind? Seeing none, we'll move on. Get the Commissioner items. We got Human Resources. Jennifer?
Good morning.
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 This is just regarding the employee requests to use thirty-five hours of sick bank time. I'm looking for an approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, second, approve the sick bank request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And I stuck one other thing in here at the end. I forgot about it. Last night, the other night, Council meeting, they decided they're gonna have a committee to look at the public safety tax and look at all the numbers and everything around it, the issues going on, before they decide to determine whether or not there's taxes warranted or not and increase. So, I was, I was asked to be on it, but I think it's the Board's, we need to decide here who's gonna be on it, not, you know, so. If one of you guys wanna be on it, if not, I will, but I didn't wanna just take that up on myself.
Motion to approve Stan Plots as our representative to the study of the, what you wanna call that, safety.
Safety Loafer.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made, second, appoint me to serve with the council, the members on the public safety consideration, Public Safety Tax Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anyone have anything else?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second, adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.